I could call the Tuesday night Jackson County Board of Commissioner meeting to order. At this time, please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation led by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for the countless blessings you bestowed upon us. Please overlook everyone tonight to make sure we can make it home safely. Please grant us the wisdom to make wise decisions that will benefit all Jackson County residents. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Pulaski.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion in support. Any items for deletion? Addition? Understood? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards or recognition tonight. Are there any communications or petitions to be presented to the clerk? Seeing none, any special, no special orders or public hearings, we have arrived at public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. You may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open.
Peter Bournemouth, ooh, wow, 142 West Pearl Street. I'll step back a little. I'm here in support of the Veragee Project. I hope that we have a unanimous vote approving this. I think it is fundamentally important to the county and to our citizens that it moves us into the 21st century. I am aware that it's only possible because there are federal dollars available to go to this project, but that opportunity should not be lost. It's a valuable one, and I hope that you all will vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello, Commissioners, Amy Hawkins, Concord, Plaski Township. Thank you to all of you for your service and welcome to Mr. Willis as my first one here since he's been elected, so welcome. The thing I want to draw your attention to tonight, which you guys are probably far ahead of me on this, on top of being a proud citizen and community member of this county, I am also chair of Police Week Michigan. And I would like to ask the Commissioners to consider doing some sort of resolution in the month of May. As you are familiar, President John F. Kennedy initiated Police Week in 1962. He established the 15th of May every year as Peacekeepers Memorial Day, and the days surrounding it are Police Week. In 2018, when law enforcement were being pummeled, and I reached out to a friend of mine who's a sheriff and said, "What can I do?" And he said, "I wish Police Week was recognized more like Memorial Day," to which I said, "What is Police Week?" And I think it's one of the biggest secrets of America. Americans do not know that a wonderful Democrat president established this week, May 15th. Every year is Peace Officers Memorial Day and the days surrounding it as Police Week. So if you want more information, policeweekmichigan.com is the website for the group that I'm running. But what I would ask as Commissioners, as community members, do whatever you can to make a public statement as leaders that you stand in support of law enforcement. Rally around your local township law enforcement. Let them know that you have their back, and I know that our sheriffs and colleagues would greatly appreciate a public resolution if you choose to do that. So thank you for your service, and that's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Biddinger, Jackson County, Blackman Township. I have recently applied for the position on the Board for the Human Services, the Region Two Action Agency. I did see on the agenda that the Board is recommending the incumbent, I don't know what you would call her, but to continue to serve that. I just wanted to speak on that. She is obviously well-qualified and lists many positions held in our community, which I, as the first time doing it, I did fail to mention anything on my application about the things that I have been involved in. But I am very passionate about Jackson County and have been actively participating in learning about our local governing for the past few years. I would like to see more serving on this Board, more people serving on this Board, which acknowledge the horrible consequences of deaths and failing health from not only our senior citizens, which this Board is concerned about, but healthy adults and children. The deaths and failing health from the experimental COVID hoax and the fallout that came from that. My opponent, which I can't think of her last name, Debbie, I'm sorry, I drew a blank on that. She is employed by Henry Ford, which is, as far as I know, seems to be the only business or corporation to require masks on their property still. I recently went there and went through quite a hassle with them. I have visited other hospitals outside our county that are not continuing this scientifically ridiculous enforcement. I would hope that she is not supportive of their policies like I know of other frustrated employees who are there are forced to go along with, and that she would not continue to deceive our seniors and endanger their health on this issue. I then also would like to ask you to consider my app in the future in order to be able to serve our community in this capacity. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. We've arrived at the minutes for the March 21st, 2023 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion in support. Any corrections? Additions or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion? Have a motion in support. Commissioner Baer.
I would request that under Consent General Government, items A and E be removed.
Okay, we will make those items 14A and 14B.
Thank you.
Chair of General Government, understand? Got that, Phil?
That's it.
Okay, sir. Any other items for removal or consideration? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Be voting electronically? Motion carried, has amended. Standing Committee Public Safety and Transportation chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have some appointments tonight. Give me a minute to pull them up, please. The first is for Joint Airport Zoning Board. Current member is Jack Koch. Jack Koch has reapplied. He was also the committee recommendation.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy.
The second member is Thomas Schaffner. He is the current member. He did not get his application in, nor did anyone else at the committee meeting. I do believe, I have to go back to look. Heaved. They're not in here.
We'll repost, sir.
Okay, we'll move on.
Please.
Region Two Planning Commission, public seat. The current member, it's a vacant seat. We have one applicant, Patrick O'Dowd. He was the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. O'Dowd. Commissioner Kennedy.
Mr. Chair, we're going to back up to the Airport Board. Mr. Schaffner did get an application in. It was emailed to all Commissioners.
That's fine, sir.
Okay, is there a nomination for Mr. Schaffner?
Any nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That takes us down to the Emergency Management Advisory Council. The first seat is the Jackson County Sheriff or designee. Current member is Sheriff Shutey. The applicant is Under Sheriff Chris Simpson. He was also the committee recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If you'd like to take those designees, sir, all together, you may.
Okay. There's one that also put in an application late. That's Jeff Kirkpatrick. Should he be done separate, or would that be okay?
We can take him separate, sir.
Okay, we'll take him separate. So all the other committee recommendations I'll be putting forth.
We have a motion in support for the City of Police Designee of Sergio Garcia, City of Jackson Fire Chief Designee Chad Everett, Michigan State Police Kevin Rod, Township Fire Chief Scott Garzicki, Township Police Chief Dan Deering, County Commissioner Ray Snell, City Council Member Freddie Dancy, Jackson County Medical Control Tim Black, Jackson County Medical Services Provider Brian Walls, 911 Central Dispatch Jase Hammond. The designees, the nominees, and Citizen at Large Tim McElDowney. Those are the ones that came out of committee. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Do you have a Citizens at Large seat to appoint? Vice Chairman Donegan, or excuse me, Kennedy.
Thank you, thank you.
I look, apologize on that, Corey.
All right. Citizen at Large position, current member is Jeff Kirkpatrick. Mr. Kirkpatrick did get an application in. You all should have received it in your emails. Be looking to move Mr. Kirkpatrick forward as a Citizen at Large.
We have a motion in support. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Okay, the last we will have is on the Jury Board. It is on a recommendation of the Circuit Court Judges. Current member is David Hamon Tree. David Hamon Tree was the applicant and also recommended by Judge Jordan. He is also the committee recommendation.
We have a support and a motion to concur with the recommendation of Judge Jordan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes business for Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee General Government chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two orders of business tonight. The first would be item A, the Veragee Project.
Entertain a motion and then we'll have some discussion.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any discussion on the Veragee Project?
I like this project overall. It's a great idea. I want to make sure we don't have any stumbling blocks here. I see one. In the Veragee LLC Guaranteed Energy Services Contract, we have Attachment C, which is a payment schedule. Also, we have an escrow and account control agreement, which that also has a method of payment to the contract, to the, to Veragee. We can't have a contract that has two different methods of payment. We need, I believe we need to somehow resolve this. The escrow and account control agreement, I believe, is the preferred method where Veragee would like to get paid by. The Attachment C was put in there for other purposes. So I would like to see Attachment C removed from the Guaranteed Energy Services Contract.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I, does it have support? I'm sorry, Commissioner Baer, your motion died for lack of support. Further comments?
Yes, further comment, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You can't have two methods of payment. That's, that's just ridiculous to have that in your contract. They're going to get paid by one approach or the other approach. They can't get paid by both. To have two methods of payment in your contract is almost guaranteeing you're going to end up in court. Maybe our attorney wanted that, then he'll get more pay when he handles our lawsuit for us. I don't understand why you guys find this acceptable. You just can't have two methods of payment. Choose one.
Any further comments from Commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Madam Clerk, could you post it? We'll be voting on the Veragee Project, sir, going forward. Yes, that's where we're going right now. We have a motion in support with that, that's how we began discussion. The maker of the motion was? Ray Snell, and the support of the motion was?
Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy. So we have a motion from Commissioner Snell, support from Vice Chairman Kennedy. You made your attempt at an amendment, and it failed due to lack of support. There was no further discussion. We accept your argument, but we're going to go ahead and vote on the project. Madam Clerk, are you ready to post?
It is posting.
Electronically, it's in front of you, Commissioners.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckham. Entertain a motion and support, and then we'll have some discussion. Did you make a motion, Commissioner Duckham? I'm looking for support. Support from Snell. Conversation. We are on item E, Proposed Policy 3300, Education Assistance Program Policy. You asked for it to be removed. Commissioner Duckham has made, made a motion, and Commissioner Snell has supported that motion.
Two or three months ago, when I was asking for some clarification on a reimbursement, I was told by our administrator and our assistant administrator that there was an existing policy to pay employees certifications and licensing. I was told that policy existed. Well, I'm disappointed in the answer I got two or three months ago, because obviously the policy didn't exist, because it is now being put into Education Assistance Program Policy. I like that it's in there. I just didn't like two months ago being handed a load, handed a load of male bovine excrement. I'm disappointed in our administrator and assistant administrator for having done that.
If I may explain, Tony. There are required licenses, educations, certificates, very similar to those of us that are in the health field that we're required to have. And the county pays for those. Okay, that are stipulated within a job title for you to have. A health inspector is required to have a state health inspector's certificate. A soil, water, and erosion person is required to have the same type of certificate for their job. Those are separate from what this education's assistance policy is. This would be someone coming to the county, going to work, has a clerk in the treasurer's office, and then studying for eight or 10 years to become a CPA so that they could become the chief deputy to the treasurer. Then to go through the school process, get the equivalent grades that you would need, and this policy would allow you to be reimbursed. This is separate from the certificates and license that are required for a job. Do you understand the difference?
Being that I asked for and have never been given that other policy that you're talking about, this is the only policy I've ever seen that covers licensing. And if, and I said, "I'm in agreement with adding this here." Yes, we do need to pay our employees licensing fees.
This policy has been in place since 2012, sir. Look at the bottom of the policy. It has the date.
This hasn't been in here since 2012. It's the red line, that's what is being added today.
No, they're, they're, they're adding new qualifications and new rules to it. Policy's been here since 2012.
The policy since 2012 did not have this clause.
Right, that's why you go back and add it, because it was understood that you would receive those.
Yes, that's what I said. I agree.
So now, so now you're adding it to this policy. We're going back and where we had made a mistake, we're putting it in.
That's what I said, I'm glad this is being added.
Thank you.
So I'm going to vote in support of this. All I'm saying is that, two months ago, I was given a totally different story that...
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm disappointed, I'm just stating that I'm disappointed in our Administrator and Assistant Administrator for not being forthright with me when I asked a question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for sharing your concerns. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Duckham.
That's all the business we have tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business to come before the Board. Oh, I apologize. We have Standing Committees Human Services chaired by Commissioner Earl Poleski. Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have appointments to deal with tonight. For the Agency formerly known as Region Two Area Agency on Aging, now known as WellWise, as I understand, there are two seats. The first is a public seat. Its term expires April 2025. The current member is Deborah Shepherd. We had two applicants, Deborah Shepherd and Jennifer Biddinger. And the committee recommendation is Deborah Shepherd.
Any nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate Jennifer Biddinger.
Any other nominations from the floor?
The committee recommendation is Deborah Shepherd. Is that, bring it forward?
That's correct, yes.
Very good, thank you.
We have Shepherd nominated, and we have Biddinger nominated. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, you may call the rule.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Biddinger.
Commissioner Duckham.
Shepherd.
Commissioner Poleski.
Shepherd.
Commissioner Willis.
Shepherd.
Commissioner Snell. Chairman Shotwell. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Baer. Chairman Shotwell.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
Shepherd passed 5-2. Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next seat on WellWise is a county commissioner seat for a term expiring April of 2025. The current member is Commissioner Baer. He is the applicant and the committee recommendation.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Poleski.
That concludes our business, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Back to unfinished business, which we have none of. Under New Business, Item 17A, Jail Ad-Hoc Committee. As the community has been fully aware, we had a millage appear in last November's election for an attempt at a jail millage and, and an operations. At that time, we also became fully aware of the condition of our current Wesley Street facilities. Have enough financing to help us nurse through this facility and improve things a little bit going forward. We do not have the building to be able to go forward for another 20 years. I have asked the Vice Chairman to have, chair a committee, an ad hoc committee that is represented by Township Supervisors, the Under Sheriff, and then to have professional staff be there to assist us and have them interview and put together what the county feels it can best afford going forward. Whether it be just operations, whether it be an enhanced facility on Wesley Street, matter of what it is, the committee is made up of Commissioners Corey Kennedy, Commissioner Rod Walls, and Commissioner Ray Snell. And the supervisors are Pete Janzik and Jerry Adams. And Under Sheriff Chris Simpson will be participating also. They will meet, and it has an ad hoc committee. Commissioner Kennedy's decided that after the standing committees on Monday would be the best time, so that way if Commissioners are already here, can, they can attend the meeting, ask the public, and be able to watch and see what goes on. Is there any questions to this idea of this ad hoc committee? Entertain a motion?
Support.
Have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote, please? We'll vote electronically. No, you have, we're waiting. Commissioner Baer?
Thank you, sir. I, we do not know.
Motion is carried. So there'll be an ad hoc committee. Thank you, Vice Chairman Kennedy, for agreeing to do this.
Thank you.
We've arrived at public comment. Public comment guideline, each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the Board. You may only address the Board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Second public comment.
Good evening, Chairman Shotwell and Board of Commissioners. My name is Dick Williams. I'm the government market leader for Veragee. And for the past two years, we've had the privilege and honor to work with you all, as well as Mr. Overton, on putting this proactive initiative together that's really going to help deal with a lot of the deferred maintenance issues that's in your facilities and infrastructure. And I did a little research, and I went back over the last two years. We've met with various Boards now nine times. We've gotten your input on it. We've also met with Mike Overton and his staff members over 30 times. So this is something that really takes a lot of collaboration together to put the best value program together. So I'd like to recognize and thank you for that, and giving us the privilege to serve the people of Jackson County. As somebody that grew up here and was raised here, it thrills me to be able to come back and, and help the county with, with this. And I just want to assure you that we're committed to do a great project for you and the county, so thank you.
Peter Bournemouth, I, I just wanted to thank Rick Shealy and his staff for all the work that they did as well with Veragee. I want to just see that Rick gets a mention here, because, you know, he, he put a lot of effort into preparing the ground for this project as well. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Always like to thank the public for coming out, paying attention to what's going on in the community. Also, just like to mention, Ms. Hawkins commented on Police Week, May 14th through the 20th is Police Week this year. And I'd like to see all Commissioners, if we could, give some recognition to our Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion? Do I have support? All in favor?